I appreciate that. Thank you. All right, well, good evening, everybody. Good evening. Thank you all for being here. First of all, my name is Rick Blangiarati and I have the privilege of serving as your mayor. In a few moments, you're going to meet our cabinet, but we've got some protocols. We're starting promptly at 6:30 because we are now on live TV on Olelo and will end promptly at 8:30. But in the meantime, we will be all yours and we'll try to answer as many questions as we possibly can. Well, we want to kick off the evening tonight recognizing a couple of really outstanding people for two different reasons. But I hope that, well, first I want to do is introduce, I want to introduce, where is our youth commissioners? They're here. They're right in front of me. I'm looking all over the whole place. Yes, because we're really proud of our youth commission. One of the things that we started when we came into office a little bit more than four years ago. So the first one, and Kalenna's going to go first, Kalenna Shea is here. Stand up, just take a bow. Thank you. Thank you, Kalenna. And Dominic Von Fasiho. And Dominic has come to all seven. All right, so as I said, normally I would introduce some of our elected officials at this time. But none of them are in the room yet. If they come in during the course of the evening, I will introduce them at that time. But we want to do a proclamation for Ed Tagawa. I don't know how many folks realize that June is Kapuna Month. It's Older Americans' Month, they say nationally, but since you and I, I think, are in the same age bracket, I'm going to bring you up here. We just had him the other day at city council. We're so proud of you.
Actually, you're a young guy, man. I'm 87. For the old guys, hooray!
That's great. I appreciate that. You've got me by a few, quite a few. All right, but I want to read this proclamation, part of it anyway, because we tried to put on paper as best we could how to honor you, sir. So this goes on to say, "Whereas the city and county of Honolulu recognizes older adults as a vital part of our community, rich in knowledge and life experiences." Would you like to tell us about something? No, that's okay. "And whereas their service, volunteerism, and contributions have far-reaching impact in all areas of our island community as they enrich our daily lives and serve as inspirations to us all. And whereas the elderly affairs division of the City Department of Community Service is a designated area agency on aging for Oahu, committed to developing a comprehensive and coordinated system of services to assist our Kapuna in leading independent, meaningful, and dignified lives in their own homes and communities for as long as possible. And whereas, as part of the observance, the city's elderly affairs division will honor Edwin Tagawa as the 2025 Outstanding Older American at its Retired and Senior Volunteer Programs Volunteer Recognition Event on May 23rd, which just happened. So therefore, I, Rick Blangiarati, Mayor of the City and County of Honolulu, do hereby proclaim May, I feel like we had May, I should say June, to be Older Americans' Month, and additionally proclaim May 23rd, which it was to be Edwin Tagawa Day, to offer my warmest aloha and congratulations to you on receiving this prestigious honor and extend deep appreciation, because this is true today, whether it's May or June, extending our deep appreciation for your dedicated service and enduring contributions to our community and to encourage Honolulu residents to recognize the extraordinary achievements and value of our Kapuna during this month and throughout the entire year. Edwin, congratulations. God bless you, sir." Derek. Now, Edwin, we're on live TV. We've got a lot of show tonight, but I want to give you the microphone.
You want to say anything else? Wow, I really wasn't prepared for this, but I usually have my lines ready. The one thing I'd like to say is that I belong to a volunteer group called RSVP. They have helped me do a lot of things. We have a good leader, Kimberly Itadaki. We've got a lot of people helping out. That's the reason why I work hard, yeah, and for all the other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edwin. Congratulations. Now, I think it's really appropriate tonight that we're in the Kalani High School cafeteria because we're about to recognize the 2025 Teacher of the Year. His name is Brian Silver. Many of you probably know him from Kalani High School. He's in the Science and Career Technical Education. Brian, right over here. Where's Brian? He's right over here. There you are, on the side. All right, Brian, congratulations. Anything you want to say?
Thank you very much. I'm humbled to be here and representing all teachers in our state. I may be the lucky one represented today, but there are hero teachers across our entire state in every classroom for all of our students. I'm also blessed to be joined by a couple of my robotics students, Katie Wilson, that are here watching a little bit of the town hall that are in this area. Thank you very much for your recognition.
Well, it's well deserved, man. Congratulations. I spent a number of years in the public school board, and I know that they don't hand those out unless you've done something really, really great. So Brian, thank you. Thank you for your work with our young people, especially in this field, because it really does represent the future. And congratulations, because I know the competition, because there are a lot of great teachers out there, is really strong. So bravo to you. Congratulations, Kalani High School. Way to go, man. Okay. So I said I would introduce any elected official that came in, and my good friend, the Chair of our city council, Tommy Waters, just walked in the room. Tommy. Been a long couple of days for you, Tommy. I saw you in that same shirt early, early this morning on Hawaii News Now. Very early today, a long day. Thank you for being here, though. We appreciate it. Okay, so what I'd like to do now, before we get into a little bit of the house rules, first of all, thank you again for being here. This is our seventh town hall of the year, in which our entire cabinet has come to each and everyone, but it is our 29th overall. And over the last couple of years, as we've done these, it's been incredible learning and enrichment experience selfishly for this group of men and women. Because, you know, this is really taking you to the level in meeting with people and listening to your issues and concerns and problems at the level that we all want to feel and know so we could do something about that. So I know that you're here, and I want to talk a little bit about how we're going to conduct ourselves. But first, I'm extremely proud to have this cabinet and let them introduce themselves. And where should we start? Here. Where? Okay, down there. He's got the mic. I'm sorry. I didn't know who had the mic.
Good evening. My name is Ian Santi. I am the Deputy Director of the Honolulu Emergency Services Department. Our department is our emergency medical services, our ambulances, our city's health services, and the city's core program. Thank you for having us tonight.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kim Hashiro, Director for the Department of Customer Services. Our areas include satellite city halls, the DMV, and public communication. Thank you for coming tonight.
My name is Brian McKee. I'm the Chief Information Officer of the city and the Director of Information Technology. So I'll be here to answer any of your technology questions about what's going on in the city. And thanks for inviting us. Appreciate it.
Aloha. My name is Kurt Lager. I'm the Director of the Ocean Safety Department, and we are the primary responders to all 227 miles of coastline in your shore waters. Thank you for having us.
Aloha. My name is Ben Sullivan. I'm the Chief Resilience Officer and Executive Director for the Mayor's Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency. We've got some of our amazing team members back there showing you a little bit of what we do, but we work for the city with all these great folks and departments, as well as for communities around the island to address climate change, both in terms of energy use and fossil fuel reduction and in terms of getting ready for the impacts that we're already seeing. So happy to be here tonight. Hope you ask us some questions. Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Roger Morton. I'm a proud graduate of Kalani High School. I'm also the Director of the City's Transportation Department. We do the bus system, the handy van system, skyline, bikeways, bike bridges, and all things transportation.
Aloha and good evening. Mahalo for being here. My name is Roger Babcock. I'm Director of the Department of Environmental Services, so we take care of wastewater and rubbish. Thanks.
Aloha. My name is Anton Krucki. I'm the Director of the Department of Community Services. So we handle all the human services activities for the city, which includes the Work Hawaii programs, includes all the public housing section eight vouchers and such. We do all the money that comes from HUD that we give out to service providers for what they do. We have the elderly affairs division, which just recognized our famous senior tonight, and we also have the grants and aid program. In addition, the childcare program coordinator is in our department, and also homelessness. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Aloha. Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Sugg, and I'm the Mayor's Chief of Staff. It's nice to see you all, and we're looking forward to the evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Formby, and I'm the Managing Director. And this is my community. I live right up on the hill. And if I throw a rock, I can probably hit Tommy Waters' house. So we're both in Kaemuki, and I'm glad to be here tonight. Thank you.
Nola, let me just interrupt. I never do this, but this is our last one of the year. Mike Formby, Managing Director. That role in the city means, and just so you know, all of these men and women and a whole bunch of others all report to him. The only people who report to me is Corporation Council, the lawyer, so I can deal with that. But Mike is, he's our unsung hero. He's our most valuable player, and this team knows that. And I just want you to know, when it comes to the heavy lifting, this man is absolutely brilliant. He's a beast when it comes to working. I don't think he sleeps. And a lot of the success we've had over the last four years has been directly attributed to Mike, his vision, his knowledge, and what he gets done for us. So Mike, bravo.
MD told me to say it's all about you, Mayor. He's my boss, too, so. Aloha. I'm Nola Miyazaki, Director of Human Resources, and it's my privilege to support the more than 10,000 dedicated city employees we have who help the community thrive. And so tonight, we're happy to invite you to visit us at our table back there. I have one of my top recruiters, Darcy, with us tonight, and we'd love to share some of the exciting opportunities we have to join the city Ohana. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dita Hollyfield. I'm the Director of Enterprise Services. I have a really fun job. I get to do some really cool stuff. I oversee the Honolulu Zoo. I get to manage the six municipal golf courses, the concessions, and all of the entertainment venues for the city and county. It's an honor to be here. I did my best to suck up with my red jacket, but it was too hot to wear it. So it's the thought that counts. Glad to be here, and thank you for coming tonight.
Aloha, Kakao. My name is Laura Thielan. I'm the Director for the City and County Department of Parks and Recreation. We manage the approximately 305 parks around the island of Oahu, the five botanical gardens, and all of the street trees and trees in the parks. And our community forestry program works with people along with our Parks Department for things like adopt a park, planting trees, benches, and helping to make our parks better, including things like murals. So if you're aware of people in the community who want to help Kakao for a park in the area, please come see me afterwards, because we'd love to have community involvement in the parks because it sends a signal that these are your parks, and then they are better cared for by everybody else.
Hello, everyone. My name is Braden Ogata. I'm the Major for the Honolulu Police Department's Waikiki Patrol District. Today, we also have with us some of our members from our community policing teams, who are all here to be here for the event, and thank you all for having us.
Good evening. Aaron Takasaki-Yong, Assistant Chief with the Honolulu Police Department. We look forward to your questions or concerns that HPD can address for you. Thank you.
Aloha. Good evening. Stacey Tanaka. I'm the Major of District Seven, which is East Honolulu, which encompasses east of the Poonaho off-ramp all the way to the Makapuu Lighthouse. Glad to be here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kevin Mokulehua, Assistant Chief with the Honolulu Fire Department. Looking forward to this community engagement. Thank you.
Ernie Lau, Manager for the Honolulu Border Water Supply. Aloha.
Aloha. My name is Kira Shushom. I'm the City's Chief Data Officer. Essentially, what that means is I work for everyone here and to help streamline how we manage data for the city and through the city for you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Walter. I'm the Deputy Director of the Department of Emergency Management. We coordinate with all the agencies here, with community, to prepare for, respond to, and recover from large disasters that may impact the city. We're a few days into hurricane season, and I wanted to encourage everyone to take an important readiness step tonight. A couple months ago, we rolled out a new city alert system called HNL Alert. And you can register to get additional alerts during hurricane season if we have to open shelters or providing other services at hnlalert.gov. It also provides updates on road closures and other things. So go to hnlalert.gov and register, or you can sit in your seat and text 888-777-HNL-ALERT, and you've checked something off your hurricane readiness.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jordina Herr. I'm the Childcare Coordinator for the city. We're working hard to expand affordable childcare opportunities for our youngest Keiki and our hardworking families across the island. Thank you for being here.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kevin OJ. I'm the Director Designate of the Department of Housing and Land Management, the city's newest department. Our primary mission is to facilitate and accelerate the delivery of affordable housing across Oahu. I'm also a Hawaii Kai resident, so it's indeed an honor to be here tonight. Thanks for being with us.
Good evening. My name's Brian Gallagher. I'm the Deputy Director for the City's Department of Planning and Permitting. So yeah, commercial, residential, private property, we do building inspections, long-term range planning, zoning, infrastructure projections, things like that. Thank you.
Aloha, everybody. I'm Dawn Apuna. I'm also with DPP. Thanks for having us.
She's the Director of DPP, okay? She's so understated. One of our biggest undertakings in our efforts as an administration is fixing DPP. She is the woman in charge. She's done a hell of a job over the last several years. So modest.
Aloha. My name is Amy Aselby. I am the Executive Director at the Office of Economic Revitalization. A couple of my colleagues are here in the back, Caroline and Max. Welcome you to come back and talk to them a little bit about the Oahu Business Connector. If you are an aspiring entrepreneur or have a business that might need some help or support, we'd love to talk to you. Thank you.
Good evening. Aloha. I am Andy Kawano, Director of Budget and Fiscal Services. My team oversees accounting, fiscal services, budgeting, payroll, purchasing, and real property taxes. Look forward to answering any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Good evening, everyone. Jean Albano, Director of the Department of Facility Maintenance. My department of 600-plus strong is responsible for the maintenance of city-owned streams, sidewalks, streets, buildings, streetlights. And so if any of those are not working or needs repair, you certainly know who to come and see. So I'm looking forward to our engagement tonight and having a tough story. Thank you very much for having us.
Aloha, everyone. Good evening. My name is Roy Miajira, former resident of New Valley. Happy to be back home on this side of the island. I'm the Director of Homeless Solutions. I suppose it basically speaks for itself. Looking forward to productive evening tonight.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Lloyd Yoninaka. I am the Executive Secretary for the Neighborhood Commission, and I oversee all our neighborhood boards. Before I get to the boards, I've got a couple of staff, three staff here. If you guys could raise your hands. Some of your board members may know them, the two, Dylan's and Travis. I know we have a lot of neighborhood board members here. If you are a neighborhood board member, just can you raise your hand so we can acknowledge you? All right. Thank you. Thank you for your service on the boards.
Good evening. Mark Yonamine, Deputy Director with the Department of Design and Construction. We are involved with a lot of the construction projects for the city except for, except ENV and Border Water Supply. But, you know, we do improvement projects at the zoo, Blaisdell, road paving, a bunch of projects, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. There's another group of our leadership team in the room that is not able to introduce themselves, but I want to introduce them, starting off with our Director of Communications, Scott Humbert, over there. Ian Schering is in the building. He's back there. Ian's over there. Brian Wilson and Randy Higa is in the back over there. Good, okay. All right, and look, I'm struck by the number of men, and I don't see any women, but men in uniform tonight that are here. I want to thank HPD, HFD. You met Ian from EMS and Kurt, who's the head of our Ocean Safety Division. I would tell you, if I've learned anything in the last four years, I've learned to have an incredibly deeper, and I thought I came into this job with a deep appreciation, understanding, but the first responders, these men that are in here tonight, they serve the island of Oahu, are as good as anybody, anywhere. And so I'm very proud of them, very grateful that you're all here. I want to thank you for being here. That said, just a couple of rules. We're going to make it easy. Not that we want to operate with rules. That sounds a little too structured. But the fact is, we came here tonight with this group, all the men and women here, to answer as many questions as possible. So if there's a rule number one, I want you to come up, ask your question, try to get to the question as quickly as possible. I understand you might have to set a little bit of context, but no speeches. I reserve the right to say to you, please get to your question, okay? Because sometimes it's very tempting for people with a microphone to just want to do that. We're not going to do that. Our goal tonight is to make it worthwhile for you for coming here and spending two hours and giving of yourself and your time, okay? Which is a good segue to tell you that we know that if you're in this room tonight, you're passionate about something, or at least, at the very least, where you live. I understand that. And, you know, passions run deep, so all we ask is that you be civil. We know there are problems out there. That's what we're committed to do, is solving problems. We ask that you be civil. We will be civil in return. Otherwise, one of these people will come and take you away. I'm just kidding. That's not true. But don't push it, okay? No, all right. And so in that regard, what I think we're really proud of is we don't filter this. So you can come up and ask us anything you want, okay? If there's something we cannot answer because it's inappropriate for the situation, I'll tell you that. If there's something that's proprietary, I'll tell you that. But other than that, we'll try to answer your question as best as possible, with the understanding is that you might not like the answer. Because we don't go to these to pander to anybody. We go there to try to be transparent and share what we know and say the truth. Because part of this, and I think part of the reason why you're here, is we want to manage expectations. We're not going to tell you something that's not going to happen. We're not pieing the sky behind the people. The only last thing I would say is that we don't want a line here. We'll get to all of the questions, one person at a time. You figure it out after they go back. Next person come up, because when you do that, you cut off line of sight. It's not good television, anyway, but that has you standing for some time. So we'd rather just have you come up here and ask a question. Now, I normally would say, here we go, somebody come up. But there's somebody at the last town hall, I promise that they came tonight, you could ask the question. I want to kick it off with him. So Lee, I'm going to call you up to ask your first question, and then after that, it'll be anybody who wants to come up.
Well, I have six questions.
I said one question. I know you. Go ahead.
I just want to know if there's any updates on the property that the city took from the Navy, through the National Park Service.
For 405, 406 acres, and the purpose of that is to do what? Not all of it.
Whatever you want with it.
But Lee has been, usually we have a lot of car enthusiasts here. They've come to all of our town halls, I think all 29. I think, Lee, I think you've been to all 29.
Yeah, pretty much.
And this is something we made a commitment to because there is a big, big interest across the island in auto sports. Especially the fact that Oahu is the only island that doesn't have any kind of a racetrack or outlet. And what it does is it lends itself to speeding, which I know some of you are going to want to talk about tonight with our officers in the room. So we'll be there in a second, okay? Yeah, I don't want to have a saying in line. I just said if you just stay seated, and then you come up when we're done with him. That's how we're doing it, because it just cuts off people being able to see this. So I'm glad you asked that question. Michael Formby, Managing Director.
So Lee, thank you for that question.
I'm sorry I bother you so much.
No, you're not. So we made a commitment a long time ago to Lee that we would provide a forum for motorized recreational sports. And Laura got an email today from David at the National Park Service, and I'm going to let Laura give the update, because she's the one that asked the question that spent a lot of time on the phone with David to convince him to email us what he did.
So Lee, I am happy to let you know that the National Park Service has agreed to allow us to do an interim use for the 20-acre lot out at Kalailoa for motorsports recreation use. We're not allowed to build there, but we can do, as you know, because when I worked with you when I was at DLNR, a dirt-style track for racing. And that can happen concurrent with while we go through with the master planning for the overall area. So the National Park Service had to agree to this, what's called a program of utilization for this type of use. I spent a lot of time with the contact at the National Park Service, let them know that my husband proposed to me at backpacking trip at Glacier National Park, and we took all of our girls backpacking at the national parks. So I got his support and said there are many types of recreation, and we have to support this type as well. And so they've notified us today that they are approving the interim use, and they look forward to working with us on the long-term master planning as well.
Wow, that's awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Lee, I'm absolutely tickled that that happened just today. And look, as I said, I think Lee and a whole lot of other people have been at all 27 town halls. In fact, in our first year, they were demonstrating. You've gotten a little bit more. So I'm glad we're able to deliver. I'm excited about that. Excited for anything that we can do to enhance these recreational opportunities on our island. We just have a special guest, not a guest, but he's here, elected official, and that's Joe Gedeon. And just so you know, Joe is the person who stepped in about the last month, I think, to be a rep replacing Gene Ward, who I know many of you know and love. Joe, where are you in the room? He's right here, Joe. Okay, young lady.
Aloha. My name is Heleni Sonora-Pole. I got a text today, Mayor, from... from a resident from Kapalina Beach Homes, saying, anyone's eyes burning from the water after showering recently? This was a text from another resident whose eyes was burning, literally. I got this text today. So I talked to some of the other Kapalina residents that I know, and they're having water issues right now.
And where is that exactly? Because I want to turn this over to Ernie Lao.
Yes. It's not on the Border Water Supply Water Distribution System. It's on the Navy system. My question to you is, do you support the Navy reopening the two poisoned wells, the Red Hill Shaft and the Navy Halava Aia Shaft?
I want to let Ernie address that, because you know he's on the other side of that. I know he's gonna say no.
Yeah, but it's a political question, I think. Do you support it?
Well, I want, I want to listen to what Ernie says, and I'll tell you my position. Because Ernie and I have been on opposite ends, but not on Red Hill.
Yeah, I don't think we can trust the Navy to be a water purveyor.
Okay, well, I get it.
Provide water to residents on Oahu.
Yeah, but Ernie's a long-established guy, runs the Border Water Supply.
But I want to know what your position is.
I'll give you my opinion, okay? I'll give you my opinion. I want Ernie to speak first. Is that fair? Okay.
Aloha, Heleni. Nice to see you again. Aloha. Mahalo for your support on the, on the Red Hill issue for years now. And what Heleni is referring to, that the Navy has two water sources that they shut down. Of course, Red Hill Shaft located very close to the fuel tanks, that was heavily contaminated with fuel back in 2021. And across Halava Valley is their Aia Halava Shaft, which they also shut down after the contamination event from November 2021. They've installed a temporary water treatment system at Aia Halava Shaft using activated carbon, like charcoal filters, 12 large tanks. They also plan a similar type of system at Red Hill Shaft, and their goal is to try to reactivate those to serve the Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam. This does not come to the Border Water Supply System like Heleni said. It goes to the Navy system. The question is, you know, what do I feel about that? I've been told by the Navy that they're, they're testing for, they're treating for petroleum hydrocarbons, PAH or polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, and also PFAS at both locations. I think I understand why the Navy is trying to get redundant water supply for the base, because right now they only have one Waialva Shaft. And if that goes down, Joint Base Pearl Harbor Hickam is without water. But my question to the Navy is, where do you think the contamination's coming from? And should Border Water Supply also be concerned about the spread of this contamination in the underground aquifer? Because on the Red Hill side to the Halava side, it's one connected aquifer system. It's not separated. And our concern from the very beginning has always been the flow of contamination across the valley. So I understand, Heleni, I understand why the Navy is doing it, because they don't have a redundant backup water source, and they need to keep the base operating. But I'd like them to be transparent about where they think the contamination's coming from, but also take actions, and they are working on it, but move faster, put more resources at locating the contamination underground in the aquifer and the volcanic rock, and trying to clean it up. Because the better we know what's happening deep underground, we can know what the future impact could be on Border Water Supply wells, which are just right across Halava Valley, less than a mile to the west.
Thank you, Ernie. Thank you for that.
Okay, so even though Ernie and I were opposing viewpoints on the landfill, we were very much aligned on Navy closing Red Hill. And Mike Formby and I afforded the opportunity to, all the way up to Secretary John Del Toro, to Admiral Aguilino, who was running into PECOM, Admiral Puparo, we've been really clear in our position on that. What he's talking about, though, and what you're asking about, first of all, I'm not as briefed on it, and I certainly am not in a position to control the Navy as the mayor. Very concerned, very protective of our own drinking water. We'll look into this, but they know where we stand. They've worked with us very creatively. I was really impressed with Admiral Ware, who came here, and his job was to defuel the tanks. We heard that strategy from the beginning, and they did it without a hitch. So this is a residual problem. I know that their intent, the United States Navy, okay, they're providing drinking water for their people. They had a lot of issues. They want to get that cleaned up. I have to believe in them and their responsibility to those people and to really all of us. But we're not gonna do anything or sign off anything that could possibly jeopardize our drinking water here. And we've been clear about that all along.
Do you have a say in whether or not they can reopen it?
I don't have a say, except we go to these, they invite us, and we say what we feel. And I felt that we had a good voice. Look, I can promise you this. When it started, and our initial conversations with the Navy is, we'll never close Red Hill. That's where it started. Four months later, they were closing Red Hill. I don't take any credit for that, but this issue is highly sensitive. It's in the knowledge of everybody that's there, in there. So they've had to operate with high integrity, and they showed us on the defueling they did. This is a residual problem, like Ernie said. Not sure in the aquifer where that might be. So that causes us great concern. So we've been really, we've been staunch advocates about that, and the Navy knows that. We kept it really friendly throughout the whole thing. Not friendly, we kept it on a good level, constructive level, trying to solve that problem. It hasn't been hostile, okay?
Yeah, and, you know, I want to just say that, like, Kapalina Beach Homes, where they're now, like,
Yes.
showering in water that's burning their eyes, that's actually, they're not military. It's not military housing. So 93,000 residents that live, that, that drink the water that the Navy distributes.
We're gonna look into this. We're gonna look into this. As you just said, you got a text today. This is quite honestly the first time I'm hearing about it.
No, no, this has been going on. This has been ongoing. And we've been very transparent, trying to,
Okay.
trying to educate the community about the water, because the Navy is not. So even the GAC system, so, you know, we have concerns about this whole GAC system that they're gonna use to filter the water, that they're gonna distribute to our family and friends out in Eva. And, you know, it's gonna take two weeks for them. So if the GAC system fails, it's gonna take two weeks for them to find out it's failing.
Well, let's see.
Meanwhile, the families are gonna get poisoned again.
Well, we hope not. But let's, thank you. I, I think we'll just, and by the way, I got one other thing, and I appreciate you bringing this up, even though it's not for this location.
No, it is, because our water comes from that side. That Moanalua Aquifer is, provides most of the water for this area. So what they do to their shafts is gonna affect our water here. So it does have everything to do with our water.
Okay, I appreciate knowing that, then. All the more, I do. And I promise you, we'll, we'll look at this. I mean, Ernie, look, I don't think, I'm not here to brag on all our people. I've already said about our first responders and Mike and Don. This guy, this guy, you couldn't have anybody more knowledgeable, dedicated, or passionate about this subject than this guy.
I'm not, I'm, yeah. I am not. The problem here, the problem here, Mayor, is the Navy disrespects this guy.
Well, we've come along.
The Navy is not transparent with the Border Water Supply, so we don't know what's really going on.
There have been, things have, well, you're playing some old tapes, because maybe that was true in the beginning. That's why I said in the beginning, they said, hell no, we'll never shut it down. A lot has happened. A lot has happened. We'll look into this particular problem as well.
I was there. I was part of the movement that helped shut it down.
I understand. I'm telling you, I was at the table with the Secretary of the Navy, saying, you gotta shut it down, okay?
Good. Thank you. It took all of us, not just you. But I'm just saying that this, I mean, they're not listening to Ernie.
No, I think that's totally true. I don't think Ernie feels like he's not being listened to.
Did you have you watch some of the Border Water Supply meetings?
No, I don't. My days are pretty full. But I want to get on to our next speaker. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor.
This is Trevor Abrizawa.
Thank you for being here. I work in Waikiki every day, and I drive through Diamond Head. And the issue of homelessness, of course, is on everyone's mind. It has been the past few years. But it seems like this past year, it's getting better in Waikiki. And especially, you know, again, I drive through Diamond Head on my way home, and it's gotten better the last few weeks, few months. And I just don't know if it's because more shelter space, more enforcement, but it seems like your team is doing a great job. And what's the trick right now? Because it seems like it's getting better in these communities.
Okay. Is there any answer? Why don't you try to answer, and then I'll answer something. I appreciate the question, Trevor.
Thank you. Homelessness is difficult. And I think, you know, I live out here on the east side, too, and, and we have different pockets of situations. But, you know, we, we are counting, and we do keep tabs of where we are. But I do want to tell you a couple, a couple of things. One is our strategy for homelessness. It really is, we keep track of all of the creative things we can do that will get somebody to be willing to engage the system. And some of that sometimes is tough love. Sometimes it's just, you know, medical help. Whatever it is, we do everything creatively we can do to get somebody to engage the system. And then we constantly analyze our resources to service those decisions. And so, you know, we have, in the last year, we put 700 new beds in play. And some of those beds turn over multiple times in a year. That's a lot of beds, and that's where the folks are going that, that, you know, you might not see. And there are areas that you're still there, and when they're there, you know, I know it's, it's, it's an issue. But still, there are many people that we've helped along the way. And we segmented out folks so that everybody isn't about being housed. That's why I talk about beds. A lot of people need just medical treatment. And it could be medical treatment for mental illness. It could be medical treatment that is just regular mental, medical treatment, like somebody has cancer, somebody has illness, and it can be drug use. So we do all of that. We, we're doing different kinds of treatment, different kind of beds that we can address the different populations. But there has been a couple of activities that have just gone on, and one that I want to announce tonight that isn't known. So we have been working really hard on Diamond Head. That happens to be the neighborhood board that I'm assigned to. And it's been very clear to me that on Diamond Head, it's not just about homeless. They happen to be homeless, but it's a fire hazard. And it's a national, you know, it's, it's really important place for us nationally and on this island. And when we went up and inspected, we found some fire pits. So we are working on Diamond Head to go to zero, because it's a fire hazard, and that's how we're doing it. And so we're letting people know how we've tried to help them before, and the routines that they got involved in, that this game has changed. And Roy Mierira, who's the Homeless Solutions Director, he's up there on a regular basis. And as many have been up there, he's told me that there is many reported, 120, 140 people on the hill. There's 12 there now. Seven on top, five below. We're going to zero. We're going to zero because of the fire safety issues that are posed there. Yeah, my neighborhood board, I was listening when you, when you talked about that. The other thing I want to announce is something that's happened that it's in, everywhere that is around, people are talking about federal government financial cuts that are happening, right? Especially in social services. And we see that with the Job Corps, and some of that's being stayed, and other areas. And, and I monitor it very closely, because a lot of the money I get comes from the federal government. And so we monitor very closely. But one thing that has happened, as they finish out the federal fiscal year in 25, they've given us a surge of money for Section 8 vouchers. So what we're gonna do is we, we have now contacted everybody that's on that list and offered them to come in to be inspected and get a voucher. And what that's gonna allow us to do is in July, we're gonna open back up the waiting list for Section 8 vouchers. That's eight months before it was gonna open. And then we'll be able to work with people that either keep them housed, because they're on the edge of becoming homeless, or we can take people that don't have housing and put them in housing. So it's a very exciting announcement. Keep tuned. When you can apply, we'll be very public about it. But it'll be eight months faster than we were planning on doing, and I'm very excited about it. So one of these Fed things actually worked in our favor. Mayor?
Thank you, Attorney. Roy, is there anything you want to add to that? Okay. I'd like to, since it's a big subject, one of the things I didn't say, we want to do one subject a night, okay? So I want to be sure, maybe you leave here with an understanding of what we're trying to do in homelessness, with homelessness, and where we are. Very difficult problem. It's plagued our city for years. When we first came into office four years, four and a half years ago, there was one person in charge of housing and homelessness, one person. He was the staff, the administrative assistant. So to say that we had a long way to go in even developing a strategy, much less being able to execute would be an understatement. We then, in the middle of COVID, which is when we came in, because we've really only been active at this for the past two years. First year was all COVID, hard to get anything going. But we were doing our due diligence, looking around at best practices, who was receiving notoriety, if you will, for the success they were having. And we developed our strategy, which was gonna be dramatically different than what had been going on prior, which was simply having HPD go down, tell people they had to get out there, pick up their stuff, put it in storage, get out there, not dealing with the issue systemically. 200,000 calls out of almost 1 million 911 calls were from homeless. They were taking people to Queens. Queens was losing half a billion dollars a year in their emergency room. Really not good, really not good. What we've done, and I'll just cut to the quick, and the strategy we intend to employ, and I'm gonna say it again, we're only two years into it, because the first year was COVID. The second year was the last year of Governor Ege's administration. And candidly speaking, in his last year, we weren't able to affect the plans we wanted to, because so much of what we're doing is predicated on collaboration with the state. The reason being, the state is where the Department of Health resides. A lot of people think it's at the county. It resides at the state. Consequently, they get monies that we can use for wraparound services. In order to treat these people, we have a place to take them. We just don't want to kick them and put them down the street. So what we have done over the course of the last several years, even before the second term started, is we began acquiring properties. And so we've invested about $140 million in properties and facilities that we can house people in. That equates to almost 1,000 beds. All of this stuff is portable, can be moved to a different location, because some of the properties that we acquired, like the First Hawaiian Bank Building on North King Street, or Evil Ace Center, which is a 48 where we're gonna have 100 beds, we're gonna, we're gonna be developing that in time. But in the meantime, it's a great interim use. So the way it works is, we really liked having a mobile crisis unit. It was already too much of a drain on HPD, too much of a drain on our 21 ambulances with EMS. And so we saw, in other cities, how effective it was to have a mobile crisis unit of their own, which is what we have now. And we're headed to having some 40 people in it, Ian. We've got six SUVs, six ambulances, thereabouts. We'll have two more, yeah, thereabouts, right? Well, tell me the real number. Jim Ireland, if he's not here, tell me it was six. It's four. Are there two more coming? No. We have four ambulances, okay. We have a bus. We have a capability and a team of people who are medically trained to go out in the field. So we have the ability to pick them up. But the real key was taking them somewhere and be able to provide shelter, provided they would want to go, okay? And if they don't want to go, we have a remedy to that as well, in some extreme cases, because the law allows for that. But having that, but the real thing that's made the difference in the collaboration with the state is having monies now that we could pay medical teams when we take these people there to give them treatments. The typical chronic homeless person who's been out there for years suffers, probably all of them, I always hate to say all, but in our encounters, from some form of addiction, be it drugs or alcohol, or mental illness, a lot of which is centered on depression, bipolar, schizophrenia, PTSD, all treatable with medication. If they're able to get on meds, they stop taking their meds. And the addictions are tough. Crystal meth is really a bad, bad drug, okay? Tough. These people, as a result, they're not easy to deal with, okay? So we've created, we've, we've now created about 1,000 beds we never had before. And our facilities are filling up, okay? But the challenge goes something like this. We want to put people into permanent supportive housing, but a lot of people we get in, we can treat them for a while. One of the things that we now have learned from our doctors, that a lot of these people are also really sick. They suffer from some medical disease. We've seen a lot of cancer, a lot of organ failure. So in addition to that, in fact, as I understand from the homeless service providers, we lose about a person a day out on the street, just dying out there. And we're too good as a people, but this is a tough, tough problem, okay? So we're doing the best we can to establish trust. That's what the core team does. We pick people up. We have places to take to them. Kira behind me, set up a database. If the police pick up somebody, they can access that, find out where there's a bed if we can take them. So we're trying to do that as humanely as possible. And we've employed people like IHS, Catholic Charities, North Shore Medical Group, et cetera, Partners in Care, all the big homeless service providers. We're working with them extensively. We will not end homelessness, okay? In fact, one of the things that we've learned from homeless service providers is there are literally hundreds, that was estimated between 500 and 1,000, hundreds of people a year coming in here. In fact, I think Trevor knows, in Waikiki, which the numbers have come way down, the preponderance of people we encountered who are homeless in Waikiki have been here less than a year. So we're working really hard on our local people. Resources are somewhat finite, you know? But at the end of the day, what we want is functional control. So if you've got somebody, because it's become very pervasive in your neighborhood, which is likely gonna happen, which may be however many years ago, you never had that, and nobody knows what to do with that person, we can now do something with that person. At the same time, just so you know, and this is why I really want to give hats off to HPD, we're not fooling around with the bad guys. We've got zero tolerance for any kind of- We've got zero tolerance for any kind of illegal trespass or anything like that. So just in weed and seed and safe and sound, which is in Waikiki, that program alone, our offices have done in the last three years nearly 5,000 arrests. Now, a lot of those arrests unfortunately get prosecuted because the judiciary turns them back out. But we're not, we're not letting people illegally trespass or break the law. At the same time, we're trying to treat those people who are really in deep trouble, who are really suffering as humanely as possible. This is complicated, it's very difficult, but we're making inroads. Trevor, I really appreciate you saying the numbers have gone on Waikiki, the numbers have gone down in Chinatown, but it's pervasive around the islands. That's why we're going to be moving out to Waipahu. We're trying to deal with it. Our, our new family shelter, correct me, Anton from Iran, opens up in Ha'ula next week. We've got one in Wahihua, we're putting families in there with kids. We're trying to approach this at every level differently than it's ever been done before. And we're having great success. We won't end it. Our goal this year is to treat at least 1,000 people, if not more, and we've got the beds. So that's the best I can tell you. We're going at it. The Supreme Court was favorable for us in a ruling that allows us to be aggressive. But the fact of the matter is that aggressivity, only what it really does is it allows us to enact the laws we already have in the books. There were good laws on the books. We really couldn't execute like that before. We're now doing that to protect you. Last perspective, just to give you an image. All right, you can tell it home in one second, but just to give you a perspective on what we're dealing with overall islandwide. The point in time count for Oahu, the last one they did, came in around 4,500 people. If you look at a matrix, that's been that way for almost a decade, okay? My attitude is, and they tell me I'm being too aggressive, that no matter how hard you try to count, you can't get everybody. So let's just double it and let's just say it's 9,000. And the homeless service providers tell me that's too aggressive. So let's just say it's 9,000. But as a perspective, that represents less than 1% of our population on the island of Oahu. So less than 1% is in the face of the other 99% you folks out there. And so that's our challenge, if you will, because we understand how uncomfortable that is, how unsettling that is, how threatening that can be. And we're doing everything possible we can within the law on all fronts. And I really believe, knowing how many people we've been able to treat effectively, that this system is going to work. We need more time at it, we'll bring up more facilities. Roy, why don't you take it from there?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just something to add. Uh, in this part of, of government, no one loves to celebrate as much as I do. But in a situation like this, where we know that it's very difficult to make inroads and be positive about what's going on, uh, it's just hard to spike the football or pop the champagne. But, uh, since I started with the momentum that we've built throughout the years, the same type of leadership, the same type of partnership between two executives, between state and the city and county, we're able to accomplish these things in a lot easier type of fashion. So take for this in one point, we're all over on the east side or most on the east side. And I drive through Makapu and through Waianalo to get to Kailua now and then. Who always remembers Waianalo Beach Park? And that there are a lot of, there used to be a lot of encampments there, right along the highway, probably stretching about half, quarter to half a mile all the way down. If you were to drive in the last probably one month, I'll bet you couldn't find them. The people who are camping are actually people who have permits in the park, who are enjoying, finally enjoying our parks. The community, the governments got together, decided to talk to the folks who probably resist change and those should really want to change. And finally, we built some type of solution behind it to see where Waianalo is right now if you look at Waianalo Beach Park. The second, thank you. We won't talk a lot about Diamond Head as much as I want to because we're not at zero yet. It'll probably take about six months, so I am comfortable with that. But for the folks who are in Diamond Head in the metro area, we set up an emergency shelter. You might have heard of HONU, which is Homeless Outreach Shelter Program. That was been in Keiki Lagoon, in Kapolei just recently. And now, this is breaking news, um, we're going to be at the old stadium for the third time. We feel if we see a spot that is maybe not coming apart, but a little disconnected from where we are, where we want them to be, we're going to set up HONU or a shelter where we can reach out to people. Not only our IHS providers, but people like myself, we're going to be out in the field. To try to influence them to go to services. So we're starting HONU in the old stadium park in about a week. Um, please feel, call my office if you want a sort of an outside tougher tour or maybe a behind the scenes tour. Please call me if you want to see what it's all about. Really appreciate your time today.
Anybody have a question on homelessness? Go ahead, so we can cover the topic. Go ahead.
As I'm in this room, I see maybe 20 Kanaka. Houselessness, it's called houselessness. You got to know your words because 75% of these people are Kanaka from this aina. I don't like the way this, I am not even here for houselessness. I'm here for something completely different. I'm a Mahalenui to.
So what is it you don't like?
What I don't like is you do not understand Kanaka in our homeland and how they need aina to live. They need aina to be sustainable. They need aina to breathe.
Is there anything I said tonight that tells you that I don't understand that? You think you're the first person to say that to me? I'm talking about treating people medically and I'm talking about not putting up with crime. That's what we're talking about.
Do you know what makes them medically sick when you are Kanaka? Because I see Kanaka as our HPD. Are Kanaka in this room understand mental illness comes from displacement of their aina? That's where it comes from. And then, if we want to get into it, my brother was houseless in Waianae. He's dead. He was one of the Kamemera Schools graduates that was molested by his counselor. Everybody knows this. And he turned to drugs because of what happened to him. Our Kanaka matter in Hawaii, that's what I'm trying to get to you. I'm sitting back there and my heart is bleeding, listening to your homelessness, homelessness, say houselessness because Hawaii is their home. We don't not have a home. This is our home before anybody else. They don't have a house.
I understand that.
Mental illness is a correlation to all of that. And so I'm, I'm sorry that I'm very heated, but that's my people.
We understand that.
I don't think you do.
Well, I think you're underestimating who I am, okay?
Really?
Yeah. We've spent a lot of time in Waianae and on the west side. We've worked with Waianae Coast Comprehensive. I understand exactly what you're saying. I've been out on the beaches and they've said the same thing to me. I'm not homeless, I'm houseless, but I'm part of this community.
So can you teach your people to say houseless?
Well, we'll teach them to say houseless.
I've seen it 20 times, sitting back there hearing homeless, homeless, homeless.
And what I just described tonight as action we're taking that's never been taken before, okay? That's what I'm describing. Action that's humane and action that's also from the standpoint, there are consequences if you break the law. I don't think there's anything wrong with what I just said.
So I see people cheering that Waianalo is now so beautified as you sweat Kanaka and some took the kokoa, which is my ka'i mahalo. I appreciate that. But Hawaiians need to be on land. I don't know if you think that I'm not speaking English because I can olaho Hawaii.
I understand that. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. Okay, your point's well taken. Next question. This lady first, then Dylan.
So just the thing about it is I don't approve structureless or houseless because if they had a house or a structure, it would solve all their problems and it wouldn't because they are mentally diseased. Homeless is more aptly described of what the situation is, not necessarily because of what she was talking about, but more so that most people have lost their home, therefore they lost their mind, therefore why they are homeless. And I accept homeless.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my question is regarding the situation on Diamond Head, particularly along the beach, um, from Beach Boulevard, Beach Street to the light, to the access road at where the surf spot is. And there's a lot of homeless, a lot of houseless people that are living in the cliffs. And my experience, even in the last two weeks, has been, um, I have seen naked men performing mood acts. And it's a very popular tourist area. You know, you have families going down on the weekends and they're there on the weekends.
We're very aware of that. I mean, that's, that's the effort that's been made.
Okay, but this is on the beach itself and so my request.
Down on the beach.
On the beach. And my request has been if the, if we could get an HPD patrol officers patrolling that beach even once a day would make a big difference.
Yes, um, I can't say that, um, Major Ogata and his team is there every day or Major Stacey Tanaka is there every day, but I do see them patrolling Diamond Head Road. I ask them to go down Beach Road and go left and go right when the tide is right, correct?
Right, but you could, I mean, I was thinking on foot, you know, walking that stretch.
Yes, uh, they're down there on foot as well as our facilities making the scenes when we do have cleanups there. I am down there as well, uh, talking not to the residents who are walking up on top, but to the residents who will be open to me as I walk down Beach Road. So we have eyes on that more than we've ever had and try to understand to what you see.
Yeah. I mean, this one man was chasing my girlfriend and I the other morning. So it's, it's pretty dangerous.
Yes.
We know that. Thank you. All right, thank you. Who's next? Ma'am?
Sorry. My name is Sherry Spangler and I'm on the neighborhood board for many years. And I'm here speaking for myself, don't want that confusion going on. And I want to say that to you, Mary Belangiardi and Roger Babcock and everybody that's here, I do have belief in your good faith in trying to solve the problems you're trying to solve. But I'm here tonight to ask you not to sign the bill for the waters, the sewage, uh, plan increase until you jiggle with the numbers better. Because I know that I've been fighting with other neighborhood boards for many, many years. 20 years ago in the same auditorium, we got the city to admit that they predicate the size of their average home on a 5,000 square foot lot in Eva Beach. The problem for us in East Honolulu, Waianae, Waianalo is we have old homestead lots, double, triple, quadruple, sometimes larger than that. And to predicate sewage bills, I, Roger was, he came to our board, he was great, but it just wasn't understandable and we need a better system to deal with it.
Okay, well, I'm going to let Dr. Roger Babcock address that first. But you understand that we're under a federal consent decree, okay? There's no wiggle room under federal consent decrees. We put off, we, the rates haven't been raised in eight years, so this goes back, should have been prior. We were not trying to raise rates till we absolutely got into this window, which is the last 10 years of federal, because we had no other, I mean, we had no other option, okay? So had the rates been raised prior, the amortization of the, of the monies owed would have been different.
Yes, I know.
And we can't go back in time on that. But I'll let Dr. Babcock talk about it, maybe Chair Waters, who's been a strong advocate on this whole thing too as well. If you want to say something to me, you can feel.
Yeah, thanks. So Sherry, I think your, your question is about, uh, I think the way the bill is, the bills are calculated and determined, right? Based on water use. Yeah. So as folks know, um, your sewer bill is, uh, it has two parts. It has a base charge and it has a volumetric charge. Um, and so I think you're asking about sort of the basis of the, of the volumetric charge, right? So, um, the base charge is a fixed amount that you pay every month. If it's a single family home or a multifamily residence, it's slightly a different number. Uh, currently it's $77.55 for a single family resident, a single family home. And then there's a volumetric charge, which is $4.63 per 1,000 gallons of water that you use, right? So you get a bill from the Board of Water Supply for the amount of water that you used. That's, uh, based on a meter reading, the meter that's at your house. Um, and then so, um, the number of thousands of gallons you get to, uh, a water, a waste, uh, drinking water charge, and then you also get a wastewater charge. We give a 20% credit or reduction, um, in the amount of water for irrigation. So that's assumed that your 20% of your water is going to be used outside the house and 80% is going to become sewage. So you're charged, your sewer bill's charged on 80% of the water use. And I think that is your, you know, is your, is your question, whether that's the right number. Um, and so everybody does use a different amount of irrigation. Some folks maybe don't do any irrigation and some folks perhaps do a lot of irrigation. Um, so that number was calculated some number of years ago to, uh, be representative of, uh, you know, sort of an average for everybody. Um, but it's not, clearly it's, it's not perfect. Uh, some people are going to use more or less. So for folks that use perhaps significantly more than 20% of their water for outdoor use, then we do have what's called a submetering program. And, um, so that's, that's always been there. Um, and what it is, is you can put your own meter on your irrigation system. So you can then measure how much water is used outside, outside the house or for, that doesn't become sewage. Um, and so there are about 500, um, folks that have such a meter. And, um, what they do is every month they have to read their meter and they have to email the information to Environmental Services. And then we'll calculate your bill based on that as opposed to the 20% assumption. Um, and so that is the, um, that, that's the way we handle that situation. Um, and there's a lot of information about that on our webpage, including a form that you fill out. Um, and you have to essentially get approved to be in the program. You do have to submit drawings that show, um, what that's going to look like, where the meter's going to be. Uh, there will be an inspector will come out to make sure that it's actually exists, is, is installed the way it's, uh, says on the, on the plan. And, um, hopefully that answers your question, but happy to answer more.
A little more technical, you were just talking about the base rate, how much the fee is going to.
Yeah, it's, you know, Eva, they're basing it on an Eva Beach home, a 5,000 square foot lot. And I, you know, in Honolulu, Waianae, Waianalo, the lots are a lot larger. And we have older homes. I live in a house my father built in 1959. There was one lane going out to Hawaii, there was the Hawaii Kai, one lane going out to Honolulu Bay and one lane going into town. So I've watched everything grow. Dan Anoye used to talk about this, how we're behind the eight ball. No one did anything, but I don't want us to have to pay the price for that. I think it's improper weighting. And I know you're behind the eight ball on it, federal consent decree. But I think how it's being weighted and, you know, all these like, oh, we'll give you 20,000. We, I don't even, we don't water our lawn. We have 8,000 square feet of lawn.
Well, isn't that what the volumetric thing was designed to do? If you use less water, you'll pay less. Use more water, you'll pay more.
But you see, our sewer bill's three times the water bill.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's wrong.
Um, well, the sewer system costs more to operate than the border water, than the water system. So the, uh, so the charge is, uh, so these are enterprise funds. So that means they're self-contained. So we have operating costs to operate the system. And so that's all you're paying for. You're not paying for, with Border Water Supply, you're not paying anything for the water. You're paying for the service, which means the pipes and the people and maintenance of that, electricity and fuel and everything else that we have. And the same thing is true with sewage. Um, you're paying for what it costs us to provide the service.
I know. I know it's hard, but if you could make some work in session to proper weighting.
There's a lot of work going into it and I promise you, we're doing our best. You said, we're up against some numbers that are not of our doing. And Mayor Hammond signed that 15 years ago and we've inherited it. We put it off for a little bit and now we're facing a 10-year window that something has to happen. You know, we're living on an island, some wastewater, sewage.
I know we all have to pay a price, but I just don't want East Honolulu, Waianae and Waianalo to have to pay the most. That's all.
Oh, I see. Yeah, so, but I, I mean, everybody pays the same, uh, same rate. Um, doesn't matter where you live, the base charge is the same. Uh, and the volumetric charge is the, is the same. And I'd want to mention that one of the things that we've done with the new, uh, rates is we've, we've, we're putting in place a customer assistance program. So, uh, to, uh, if low, if you have low income, then you'll qualify for a credit, a monthly credit on the bill. Uh, and so we'll be rolling that out, um, early next year, hopefully. The rates will go up in January. We hope to have the plan, the, uh, that, that program in place. And, uh, so that will help folks that will qualify, uh, based on income. Thanks.
Doing the best we can. Dylan, before you do that, I just want to inform you that Ernie told. Ernie told me he's, he sent Admiral Bonner, who's in charge, Audit Pearl, he sent him a text message now, and Admiral Bonner's, they're gonna look into it right away. Okay? Ernie, anything you want to add to that? Nope? Just so you know.
Do you support your answer to the question?
No, I did. I, I support us having safe drinking water at all costs, but you're asking me about something I know nothing about. I told you what our position's been, the position we took with the Navy.
I'm sorry, Eric, I'm so much-
Yeah, well, I understand. Look, I just learned about that tonight. Dylan?
Hello. Thank you, Rick. How you doing? Hi, Mayor Rick. So, I didn't just, I'm not a psychopath. I didn't just bring a dog for no reason to your town hall meeting. All right? So, this dog was actually dog-napped three weeks ago, and we got it back last night. But I want to give a couple of thankies out first, just, just so you guys know. First off to Mike Formby, you know, we got it done after four years. We finally got that area handled that, you know, was determined it's city property to take care of. And then Dawn, thank you for what you're doing at the Department of Planning and Permitting. I do have a but for you. You're gonna have to send somebody down to Kool-Aid Place. They're construction at the utility pole. They're supporting it with two, four different beams and whatnot. So, I don't know, they're digging, so you need to get somebody down there. And they're really disturbing the land, because after, right after we got that repavement done, the water main broke, right by it. And there were, there, there are trucks that were bringing it to Kool-Aid Place, overloading it, and whatnot. So-
So, what is the question, Dylan?
So, the question that we want to talk about is, this, this was reported three weeks ago, that this dog was kidnapped, or dog-napped, or taken. And it was reported out as personal property. Now luckily, still alive. But it was three weeks, still no detective called. This is not even my dog. This is one of my tenants' dogs. And the thing is, you know, I told my tenant to call the police, get them involved. And last night, she called me and said, she tried multiple times. I even saw another police officer came by, you know, her rental unit, talked to her about what the situation is, where she had definitive information where the dog was being held, but they still did nothing. So, last night, you know, I was busy throughout the day. I have a lot of things that I have to take care of. I gave her some time last night at 7 o'clock to drive her all the way down to Waianae, not even knowing where I'm going. And I just took the information that she gave me, which was just a name. And with limited resources, we came to the house where this dog was being held. And we came, we called the police to come and assist us, and they came down, and, you know, they're doing their police thing, you know, you know, the, the normal things. But the thing is, what if the situation was different? It's a living, it's, it's, they classified it as property, but where was the detective? Not even a week in. You, you know that-
You know, I don't know if any of the officers wanted to try to answer that, but I tell you the truth, I don't have an answer for that. I'm glad you got the dog back. As somebody who owns a little rescue dog from the Humane Society, I know what it means. I'm glad you got the dog back. I, I, I don't, if what you're saying, why didn't they solve the crime sooner? Why didn't they give it a priority?
So, she, she knew who took her dog, and they had-
Okay, so she knew who took it, called it, said she knew where the dog was, but nobody went out to get it.
So, the thing is, she didn't, she didn't know exactly where that person was. But that person was in the system. And then technically, they got rearrested, and that's how we found where this dog was, because she told somebody that she gave the dog to her sister when she got arrested.
All right, I know that-
I mean, you could try, yeah.
Chief Young.
Um, Dylan, I mean, we're not, I'm not too certain about the circumstances of the investigation, if they made a theft case, or whether your animals classified as property or not. HPD's gonna try its best to resolve this issue. So, we'll get to the bottom of this, we'll contact you.
Or, or no, we already resolved it last night. I, I mean, we, we, we saved the dog, and then we filed out paperwork that the property was returned. And then we also filled out, we weren't gonna prosecute, because the person who had possession of the dog had no idea that the dog had been kidnapped. So, we're not gonna press charges against those people.
Okay. I'm glad it worked out well. I, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna come up with a better answer than that.
Well, what, what I'm saying, I guess the question is, is this is a living animal, and the response time is atrocious. Oh, also, another, another thing, just to know, so, you do the zoo, right? Yeah, so, we, we helped assist BYU's donation to all the, all the heads, and me and Wiki, Wiki Express, we got all those heads down to your zoo exhibits, by the way.
I get it, Dylan, I get it.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to say, like, how difficult it is to, like, say, hey, this is a li- live animal, let's get a priority because it's living, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna be flipping, because I have a real love for young, little dog. I'll take the dog and take it home with me tonight. You keep it up, okay?
What, I mean, you wanna hold her?
No, that's a-
Tell, tell her to her face that, oh, you're not a priority when stolen.
No, it's a priority. But we got a lot of people doing bad stuff to other people, and these men in blue are dealing with that as well, too. It's not like we're living in Nirvana here, where people don't do bad stuff.
I, I know, Rick, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I very appreciative of a lot of things that we got done, but three weeks, and then I had to throw my hands up and step in?
I'm glad you were able to do that. Seriously, this is a really success story. I'm sorry we're saying this.
Oh, yeah, lucky, lucky success. It could have been bad, right?
All right, let's, let's go next. Thank you, Dylan. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. My name is Marty Ashida. My wife and I own a home in Hawaii Kai. Thank you very much for being here, to you and your team, for this opportunity to, for the direct communication to discuss an issue which relates to, to our storm drain easement and the repair. The storm drain easement runs through our property in the back of our house, and our neighbor's house, and in between the property line of the mountain. The easement runs through all the homes on the street that are against the mountain. A 50-foot section of this easement, about four feet tall, fell down in our property and the neighbor's property. And we were wondering how we can work with the city to get this repaired.
Reasonable question. Gene Obano?
Sir, I, I understood your question. So, I think it's a matter of dialoguing to see how the city can assist with that repair, and so we can talk offline and move on to the next topic. So, let, let's have a discussion.
And I promise you, Gene will follow up. I promise you, he's really good at that. Ma'am, thank you for the question. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and all of the officials from the city and county. I'm Laura Brubu, Alawai Malka Community Association. I wish to speak and then ask a question of our beautiful, as you well know, what we see right now is our beautiful, it's an aerial view, but it's our beautiful view of undeveloped, sort of, across the canal. And I wish to have everybody understand that we can continue to have this without an intrusion that bisects our wonderful park. And this is, I'm, I'm advocating for a new kind of leadership that comes from the community and comes upward, rather than the top-down. We have had the top-down for quite a number of years, and that nice woman who spoke of the Hawaiian language, I even hesitate to use the word pono, but I have been asking for three or four years not to use the word. It is very, very disrespectful, and even I using the word is not appropriate. So, I hope you'll understand that, and that that word will be gone from any further discussion. I hope that's the case. And-
So, Laura, your question is, or your comment is, you don't want the bridge to get built over the Alawai?
Um, yes, because there's quite a number of reasons, and I won't go into all of them tonight. The wrong placement, the wrong location, the bisecting of the park. We have a full use of the park. We don't have any room for the ADA to go up, eight feet up in the air, to get, go down eight feet in the air to get to their park. We have a lay of community neighborhoods. We have four neighborhood boards that have approved a resolution, and we have over 700 people that have signed that they do not want a bridge, and the resolution asks for a full EIS, that's an environmental impact statement. What that is, is a gathering of facts and analysis that clearly will say what this whole location is about. That is the canal, the promenade, and the Alawai Park. And it's a really important thing, and, and we have, I guess, kind of sadness thing is that the last neighborhood board, which was last week, that mayor's rep came and read something, that was something I heard six months ago and three months ago, the same language. Nothing has occurred. So, there's nobody actually participating with us or in an interaction. And furthermore, I was appointed as a preservation consultant, and I'm supposed to be with a couple of other people, I believe that are in the same category, and we have had no interaction at all, and no meeting.
Laura, we heard you. Okay, but I'm gonna- Roger Morton, I want Roger Morton to speak about this.
Well, Roger and I are friendly.
I would imagine you're very friendly. Yes. Okay, so I, I, I said, no speeches. You made your point, you made a speech, I've been nice.
The main thing is, a community organization, from the bottom up. That will do a whole lot to bring us together.
Roger, thank you, Laura. I love your passion. I do, I do.
I've got to know Laura pretty well over the last five years. You know, the Alawai Bridge goes back, I think, to about 1920. There's been a number of different proposals. Most of them were automobile bridges. This is not an automobile bridge. This is a pedestrian bridge. It is a bicycle bridge. Why is it at this location? It's at the location because we, you know, we, we, we have a bike, a developing bicycle network that we're building islandwide. In this location, we have most, most directly, we have a direct connection between Waikiki and the University of Hawaii through University Avenue. Just recently, we've been up, upgrading all of our bike facilities in the area. Our King Street Bike Lane is our main artery for bicycles. We are right at the same, right now, we are making improvements on Gold Street. We're making improvements that are programmed on University Avenue. And all of what we're trying to do is, we're trying to connect our bicycle network. There isn't a better place in the, in the U.S. than Hawaii for having good pedestrian and bicycle facilities. We, we have the climate, we have the passion. What we don't have is, we have very busy streets, that frankly, it's, it's too dangerous for our bicycle riders to ride on many, many streets, and we need to provide better facilities. That's what we're trying to do. I'll tell you where we're at, Laura, in the process and where we're going forward. I know the biggest issue for you has been the size of the bridge. You've suggested to us different types of bridges, lower-profile bridges. Where we're at right now is, we've almost completed our environmental review. We have, and we, and it's been seven years in the making. It hasn't been a last-minute thing. It's been seven years in the making. We've studied all the things that really we would do in an EIS. We've studied, when we heard there was Monks Hills sighted in the canoe, we went back and did another study on what the impact would be on that. So, we've done, we've just done a tremendous amount of, of studies on that. We are at the point now where we expect Shipti to render a decision on the bridge, and then the process will be that it'll go to the Federal Highways Administration for that, and they will make the decision of whether we do an EIS or not.
It's an 18-story pedestrian bridge to double a bike lane. It's gonna cost the taxpayers, they always say it's the feds that are gonna pay the money. It's gonna pass, the cost of it right now, they've already spent 25 million, or had 25 million in federal dollars. That's gone on the plans. It's an old Caldwell plan from way back, but it's $63 million to the taxpayers. Who wants to pay that?
Could I, could I finish my statement first?
No, I've heard it before. We've all heard it before.
Okay, so, we're just about ready. We think that we're gonna get a, a decision from Shipti, and then the process goes back to the Federal Highways Administration, who determines whether or not we're gonna do an EIS. Now, the reason the FHWA does it that way, all federal agencies do it that way, is because you don't immediately go to an EIS to, on a project. But the determination will not be made by me. It will not be made by anybody in the city. It'll be made by our federal partners who do that. The bridge is expensive. It's 80% funded with federal funds. It is, I think that for people who, you know, question the bridge, I mean, we didn't build that bridge on Alamoana Boulevard, but I invite all the public, go take a look at the bridge that just opened. It's beautiful. Now, the process on, on the size of the bridge and where we go from that is, that because of the community concern, because of the, what we have had, we actually switched our process. We were gonna do what was called a design bid build, where we had a structure, and that was, we were gonna tell our, our bridge builders to build it to that design. But we've changed our process, and we now have a process where we will be inviting bridge companies to come in with alternate designs, with alternate configurations. We will do an analysis. We are gonna have a committee of, of knowledgeable people that from outside of our department, that will help us determine the aesthetic part of that thing. We're open to low, lower-profile bridges. We're open to, to different types of bridges. My objective is, I think that we need a bridge for our bicycle and our pedestrian community, and that's what we're trying to do, so.
Thank you, Roger. All right. Laura, in all due respect, I don't think that that's really top-down. I think that's seven years in the making, topped the bud since the 20s. I, I mean, I, I think we're trying to be reasonable here. You said you still want a bridge.
I responded every single time with full explanations and full facts. And, sorry, Mr. Mayor, nobody responded to me. And I'm serious. I can give you every reason why the location is wrong, why, I'm sorry, Roger, but the UH people are, live over in the dorms by the, by the stream, not by University Avenue. There's just a lot of things that are there that are making it difficult.
I promise you, we will find a way to respond to your concerns, make sure somebody's heard them. Promise you. Sir?
Hello. I would like to speak, as other people have spoken several times.
I don't want to belabor the bridge. We're done with the bridge. We've got a half hour left. I brought them all out here tonight to answer as many questions as possible. If it's about the bridge, no, thank you.
Um, I'm gonna talk about transportation and improved the bridge, okay? I'm a retired transportation planner from California, and I'm born and raised here, and I'm appalled at the level of traffic in this city. There's 950,000 cars in this island, 50,000 more a year. We have, what, four deaths already every month? We have the highest pedestrian fatality rate in the country, because kaputas are getting killed! And people are speeding, looking at their walk, looking at their phones. And you know why? Because we're all driving. We're all guilty of it. We are all guilty of it. And these people that are against biking and walking, shame on you!
All right, sir, I'm gonna ask you to ask a question, okay?
The question is, what can we do to better support biking and walking in this community? Because this is the best way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to reduce sea level rise, and to retain the Hawaii that we love! Driving in your car is the worst thing you can do for Hawaii and your kids, your grandkids, and your future generations. Take responsibility and bike and walk, and just don't think in your own little zone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, one of you, sir, and then you, ma'am. We'll get, we'll get, we'll get to it. Go ahead.
I'm gonna try to stay with my, my script. Thank, thank you for what you do. This has to do with permits. You know, rather than complaining about the permit process, I was gonna suggest we eliminate permits for projects under $100,000, require only businesses, licenses for projects under $25,000, allow individuals to work directly with Hawaiian Electric, the Border Water Supply, wastewater, the gas company, when all they need is an electrical meter, a septic tank, or a solar panel, or gas stove. With Hawaii's labor situation, the best thing employers can do is to simplify the work, reduce the stress, and hope the team members don't quit, and work with the Department of Labor to ensure that people receiving unemployment benefits are actively looking for work. So, I'm in my fourth year of looking forward to getting my electrical permit for my nursery. I know Dawn has been very helpful, but could I give this to Dawn?
Sure. Dawn, you wanna get, wanna share some perspective either on self-certification or something, or otherwise?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the questions and comments. We're making so many improvements so that we can better serve our customers and speed up permits. So, you know, there's a lot going on as far as the technology upgrades and training. We have self-certification now, so some design professionals can self-certify their projects. But, you know, we're not, we're not done, and we're open to other suggestions that you've presented, so that we can just continue to get better and better. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'm on the record of saying, since we're about to, in September, unleash what has been really a couple of years in the making and planning to buy the kind of software. DPP has been broken for decades, decades, okay? Everybody knows that. I was told as an incoming- I was told as an incoming mayor, as a candidate amongst the other candidates at the time, you'll never fix it, okay? Can't be fixed. We knew there was a massive lack of investment in technology, people, we had getting 16,000, 18,000 applications a year. We had four engineers, two mechanical and two electrical. I might go on and on. What we're about to do, and I just did at Civil Beat yesterday, did a live thing representing Dawn, but she considered representing herself. What we're gonna have, and I'll just give you the tagline, because I said it on my March 18th State of the City. By the end of this year, residential permits, you'll be able to get as fast as anywhere in the country. That is what is about to happen, okay? Self-certification, which we've tried to work through, we have some problems with architects, you know, in doing that. We, architects who won't take the responsibility, we're all for doing it. A lot of them don't pay for insurance. They want the city to indemnify them. We can't do that any more than we could say, "You go ahead and build something without a permit." If we could allow people to do home improvements subject to inspection, which is what we're getting to, we'll do that. And I think that by the time we hit the midpoint of 2026, our commercial applications will be really well up to speed as well. So, we've eliminated the backlog. We're using AI extensively. We're about to introduce a really sophisticated plan that's easy to use. It's gonna eliminate that quandary about, "Where's my permit? Why did it take four years for the nurse?" We're gonna do away with all that stuff, okay? It's been a very complicated thing to solve, and I'm proud of the work that's going on. That's why I cited Dawn earlier, because what we're doing, everybody said couldn't be done, and we're gonna do it. And we're already much better. It used to take six months just to get through the pre-screen. Today, it's three days. It used to take two years, and now it takes two weeks to get a, to get a permit from DPP. Now, if it goes to the Border Water Supply, or it has to go to Shipti or some other place where it gets held up, that's different. But we are processing. We've invested tremendously in technology. Let me give you one example. The overall system called Clarity, okay? Then you can ask your question there. That system that we just were changing, it'll be complete by September, was installed in 1998. Let me give you a perspective on 1998, because it's more than 20, just 27 years ago, from a technology standpoint. That was nine years, nine years before the iPhone was even introduced in 2007. That's how outdated this equipment was, correlates to a workforce as well, because that's the tool they were working with. So what we're putting in is as sophisticated as any city in America. I can promise you that. And it's almost built. Took 18 months to build that platform. So, I don't know what else I can say, but we're confident in the, we've hired a lot of people. We're increasing our number of engineers. We've changed pay, we've tried to do everything we can systemically to address this, because we know that time is money. It's a source of huge frustration in the community, and we don't want it, okay? Dylan, you were here already.
Yeah, but I'm adding to this discussion.
The dog ran away.
Which is the 45 million that HPD returned. Can you use that to increase DPP's effort on what you're talking about?
No, that money doesn't work like that in the city, but I appreciate the question.
All right, but, and then last thing is, can we finally have a non-police officer as the police chief, the chief of police for the Honolulu Police Department?
Appreciate your opinion. Ma'am, and then you. Both, you go first, you go second. Yes.
My name is Margaret Peggy Oran. Aloha, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for being here and allowing us to voice our concerns so that you can timely act on them. And I appreciate everyone that's sitting here. I know that you'd rather be home, probably sipping on a beer.
So you're not gonna read that whole paper, right? You're not gonna do that?
No, no.
Okay.
No, no, no.
All right.
Okay, a year ago, you said that you were in favor of and supporting kupuna who live on their rental property.
Yes.
To do short-term rentals so they can stay in business and make a living.
Yes.
We have been anxiously waiting for action that would give us that chance to make a living and not get priced out of paradise. I have friends who had mortgages and were forced to sell and leave our beloved islands forever. To stay in business, I could reset my minimum stay to less than 30 days, but considering the total lack of due process of law, I am afraid to incur a $10,000 fine. This situation is threatening my health. I have just recovered from pneumonia, and who knows what's next. I'm 82, and my chances for getting another job are minimal. So, I paid off my mortgage long ago, but I am now living on savings. We need an immediate executive order or something from you, or I and many others like me may be forced out of the islands we love. This is urgent.
Okay, I don't think I can do it with an executive order. Dawn, is there anything you want to say about that? Let me just say, on the short-term vacation rentals on a broad, thank you, thank you. She's giving me something she wants to see passed in the law. On the short-term vacation rentals, that was totally out of control. We passed a piece of legislation that probably overreached, because we don't think it's a bad experience, because it's in the minority versus the majority, for people who are living in their homes to rent out a room. I honestly am telling you, I said that a year ago. We're trying to overtake what became a real insidious impact on housing in neighborhoods and whatever, for all of the illegal short-term vacation rentals, that's the least which is economics. We got that legislation passed, but I'm not against doing that, just the how-to on that. And Dawn?
I mean, it would take legislation. I think that there's a lot of competing interests and, and, you know, that you could rent long-term to a local resident, and that's a win-win situation there, too. So, I think there's just a lot of competing interests that we're looking at, and people need housing, people wanna keep their housing, but there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had in order to make that change.
Here's what I can tell you, and Mike tells me you have the legislation on your desk now to try to get that passed. We, I wanna do that. I think that's a good visitor experience, too. We're okay with that. And people take issue with these numbers, but the numbers that I have go something like this. There are 25,000 illegal short-term vacation rentals on Oahu. 50% are owned from people who don't live here, 50%. 27%, more than a quarter, own 20 or more. This is big business. This is not you in your circumstance, okay? And they own them in neighborhoods. It's not just all out on the North Shore. What that equates to is on any given night, in a short-term vacation rental, there are some 11,000 to 12,000 room nights available on any given day, okay? That is the equivalent, since we're near the Kahala Hotel, of 28 400-room hotels unchecked in many of the neighborhoods, okay? That drove up housing costs. It caused, it took long-term rentals to local families off the market, because human nature being what it is, people are gonna look to make a multiple of what they typically get. That was a really out-of-control business, and we got really aggressive on it. Now, there's been some collateral damage. I'm not denying that. Like you said, your friend and your concerns. We want to address that. But we have to fix the other thing. And we've come up, we've got, we've gone through a whole lot on this, on software, enforcement, everything. This is another really complicated problem. And quite honestly, it's been kicked down the road forever. And so we're trying, we're gonna get that changed, because I think that that is unnecessary for what you described. If people are living in their house, they wanna rent out the back room, I get it.
A lot of us, um...
Well, yes.
A lot of us go the short-term rental route. I long-term rented for 33 years.
Yeah.
While I was working. And I'd fly out here from the mainland, roll paint, and turn screws, and repair, and that was the only time I got to enjoy my house.
Oh.
And I thought, "I'm in my golden years. Why can't I have my family to come enjoy this beautiful house that's been in the family for 52 years?"
Well, nobody's gonna stop you from bringing your family over here.
You can't, you can't do that when you have long-term rentals.
Well, I see what you're saying.
This is the flexibility you need.
Okay, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. Okay. All right. All right, but then, then, then I promise you, go ahead.
Okay. And thank you, thank you, Mayor, for coming to Rep. Ward's Beer Summit.
Wow.
You laid out, you laid out the solution here.
Yeah.
And I appreciate this. So, my question really is for the chair, and he is, he's my council member.
And you're a good friend, Tony Waters. Yes.
How quickly, Chair, can you get a bill through? Because we testify, I probably am very familiar to you, okay? We testify, we testify, we get ignored, get ignored, and it's been many, many years.
Well, we haven't been dealing with many, many, but I hear you on that, okay? I promise you, we're gonna try to get this done. If Mike said the legislation's on his desk, we'll try to get that done. We gotta, we have to change a law that we fought hard to get. And things don't move as quickly as one would think, but I don't wanna create that kind of hardship, especially for somebody like you. And I mean that. Excuse me?
It's urgent.
It's urgent, yes. A familiar face.
Hi, Linda Wong from Diamond Head Neighborhood Board, but not necessarily representing them. I think this administration is really good. There are a couple of things, and they are mostly priced out of paradise. Are, my maintenance fee is doubled. That's another $300, $600 a month. My property values have doubled. That's gone $300, $600 a month more. So that's $600 to $900 a month I have to come up with. Now, I know we're all in the same position, but it's really, the city fees have all gone up. The price to get your driver's license, the price to this, to that, dah, dah, dah. You know, it's every single one of them have gone up. And, you know, we made, what, $8 million off of what was it you told me? Of city fees when something was raised? It's just too much. It's, you know, the regular, you have to have a rental or something to, because if you're retired, you know.
I understand.
You just can't do it anymore.
I understand.
And I've worked all my life here, and, you know, I've been here 50 years, and it's really bad.
Well, you know, I can't do much about maintenance fees, because that's a homeowners association.
I understand that.
Okay? I can't do much about assessed value, given the limitations of properties and the fact that the evaluations have gone up. We have, we've been committed to not raising property taxes. Let me just finish, Linda.
Yeah.
Also, I know you just said that all the fees have gone up, but we've worked really hard to keep fees down. And the only ones that have gone up, we've, we've tried to, I even went to Ernie once trying to get the Border Water Supply not to increase water fees, just as an example. We know the cost of living, especially, you know, we're all in the same age bracket. I feel it. I know what you mean, okay? And, and we're trying to do everything we can, wherever we can, but the things you're talking about, increased valuations and homeowners' fees, which is the bulk of what you're talking about, because the rest of it is not that extreme. I don't know, so I'm sensitive to somebody who can rent out and try to do that. Want your state, your golden years, I get it. Nobody, nobody that I know at our age leaves happily. They don't want to. They just give up because the math doesn't work. That's very painful. We don't want that to go on.
Yeah, it's hard.
Okay? Yeah, I get that. Linda, I promise you, we're gonna do it. We talk all the time about our responsibility, given the high cost of living. I don't know when it was I learned the word "outmigration." I think it was before I became mayor. But we talk about that every day. It's part of my daily vernacular now, okay?
May I say something?
Yes, please.
Thank you. One thing I think we could do, and we're sort of overlooking a big venue here, is why do outside investors from other countries get to come buy up our places and they don't even live there?
Well...
They have a special driveway into Alamoana Center. You know, it's, it's, it's ridic, that's, that's what's costing us a lot of the money.
Right.
That's a lot of the problem. So why can't we do something that would fix that?
I don't think there's a way you can stop outside investors. We've been through this. It's a state, it's a state issue, but I don't know if you can actually do that.
Can our congressman, I mean, who?
Maybe. That's where the conversation takes place, but that's, that's, you know, there's certain interstate restrictions if you're a US citizen that you can't do. Anyway, I don't have the answer. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I wanna get to a few more questions, Linda, but I appreciate that.
Okay, I just wanna quickly say, the bridge, there's about six different kind places where they wanna have bridges against, over the Aloei. And all the projects that I see, the city projects, are all complete streets from the manual, right? That means that the feds pay for them. And to me, it's, it's like, sorry to bite people, but, you know, most of us have cars, and we're not gonna all get on bicycles right away. And the complete streets, the, the, the things you have to do to the street to make it qualify for complete streets, so the feds will pay for it, are just really, they room the characteristic of a lot of our neighborhoods, like in Montserrat, like, and they didn't even tell us they were coming.
But we took care of that.
No, Montserrat's still the same.
Montserrat's still the same?
Yeah.
I was thinking...
They didn't even tell us they were coming.
Okay, yeah. You wanna say something about that, Roger? I was thinking about the other street that Mike, the one we took care of.
Yeah.
Andrew.
And then the bridge is wide enough for two cars. You save for emergencies, but I, I've lived here 50 years. There'll be cars going over that bridge.
There's no way, the way the bridge is designed, that cars can go over it. But let me speak to the complete street part, too. I think the mayor was referring to Aloei, and he made it clear to me to, that that street, we're not, we're not doing anything. And as, as a, you know, when we do look at complete streets, we look from a number of vantage points. We look primarily from a safety point of view for, for all the users of the streets, whether they be bicycles, whether they be pedestrians, whether they be transit vehicles, whether they be automobiles or trucks. All of those, you know, modes use streets. When we do a complete street project, I'm very sensitive to the issue of delay, and that means, you know, what, if we took a lane and we made it into two bike lanes, which is, we do that a lot. That's, well, that, that's what, I mean, that's what I was saying, that we look at. It is a very complicated, complex, because we only have so much land, and particularly in Hawaii, the land is tighter than almost anywhere else, so.
I don't think we should make the street if there's not enough 10 feet wide for a car to go down the street.
Yeah, we don't make lanes less than 10 feet. Yeah.
All right. I wanna move on. I'll have you come back up. I wanna make sure everybody gets a chance to ask a question, so you, come on. We wanna answer as many questions. Go ahead.
Aloha. I saw you Tuesday.
Yeah.
At the Civil Beat event. So, my name is Greg Missake, and I serve on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. I just have a brief statement, and there's a group behind it, not just myself, and then a question. But I do wanna mention, if anyone is interested in the Aloei Bridge project, it is on the agenda for the Waikiki Neighborhood Board meeting next week on Tuesday, Tuesday evening.
Thank you for telling us that.
So, what I'd like to say is I do have concerns with the, the leadership at the Neighborhood Commission office. There, there's been issues with the election. The election wasn't done properly for all 33 neighborhood boards, from my understanding. The ballots did not have the candidates listed properly per the neighborhood plan, and there are other concerns with the elections also. With that said, there's already been a formal challenge by the downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board by two board members that actually were elected, so they are making this as a concern for principle. Fair elections, integrity, ethics. You know, I serve on a number of boards, not just the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, and it's very important, I think, in this state to make sure that we have integrity in our elections.
I absolutely agree.
So with that said, to get to my question, and I have other concerns with the Neighborhood Commission regarding the complaints process that's not being administered fairly or properly. So I'd like to know what you and Managing Director Formby will be doing regarding this. Managing Director Formby is already aware. You're copied on concerns. I have a formal complaint also filed a day or two ago, and I will be updating that, excuse me, tomorrow. And it also appears that HRS 19-3, I know you're the attorney here, has been violated. And that's a very serious concern, because that has to do with election fraud, but there's language in there that is compelling others to look at that, and this has already been raised to prosecute our home office.
So the question is, the question is...
The question is, as I just said, the question, what do we, what could we expect that you and Managing Director Formby will...
Well, we're gonna look into this right away, but I swear to you, this is the first time I'm hearing of it. Lloyd Yoniyaka, who runs the Neighborhood Board, is right here, since you just said he's doing fraudulent activity. Lloyd, what do you have to say about that?
Um, thank you, Mayor.
It's the first I've heard of this. It's the first I've heard of it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I agree. You're correct. There was a, there was a challenge filed, and I am in the process right now, because for those of you who don't, aren't familiar, if a challenge is filed, I have like 10 days to respond to it. So, we are in that process now, responding. I wouldn't mind talking about it, except my response is being built right now, so I don't wanna say something that won't end up in a response. I wouldn't mind talking about it, except my response is being built right now, so I don't want to say something that won't end up in a response. Court counsel has taken a look at it, and, and then at that point, Managing Director Formby will take a look at it.
Could I add one additional comment that's important to this? There was a complaint form that should have been posted on the Neighborhood Commission website a long time ago, so that if anyone had concerns, they could raise them. Executive Secretary Yanakaka was well aware of our issues and concerns regarding the ballots. Quite a while ago, I testified at a Neighborhood Commission meeting. There's been a lot going on. So I'm not gonna get into details, because others are waiting, but there's a lot here. The problem is, the gentleman that's standing right over there, and I don't mean to be so blunt and forthcoming, but I'm being blunt and forthcoming. Many Neighborhood Board members have raised concerns regarding Executive Secretary Yanakaka. He's also the chief elections officer. Conflict of interest. He needs to be removed from that position, and we need to have a clear look at these elections, integrity and ethics. There will be legal challenges, I assure you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and we've spoken previously. And I just want to say a couple of things, and, and this may not be popular. But honestly, people that run for Neighborhood Board are there because they have opinions, they care about their community. We don't get people on Neighborhood Boards who are potted plants. They're there because they care. They're opinionated, and they want to be heard. I think Lloyd Yanakaka's job is the most thankless job in the city and county of Honolulu. It is very difficult, with the number of Neighborhood Boards and board members that we have, to make everybody happy. That's the first thing. It is very difficult. We try to follow the rules, but we're not perfect. We do our best. I made the decision, when we found out in the middle of the election process, that some people had put their names on the Neighborhood Board ballot, like you can put your name on the election ballots. You can go by a different name than your legal name. And it happened, and I made the decision that rather than doing all the Neighborhood Board elections over, let's wait and see which ones had unfair results. Let those, let me finish. Let those get protested, go to the commission, and you'll get an equitable result. And I stand by that decision. I would not have spent taxpayer money on doing all the boards over when all the board elections did not have unfair results. And I don't think we need to talk about it anymore. If you want to debate, you can come see me.
That's not the issue, Managing Director. We'll talk more about it. That's not the issue. The candidates are actually listed incorrectly-
I know.
For all 33 Neighborhood Boards. Not what you just said. They're listed, they should be listed by last name first, surname-
Look, I want to say this-
In alphabetical order, and they're listed first name first.
Not every Neighborhood Board is complaining. You are. You go through the process. The Neighborhood Boards that are not complaining, let them get back to work.
When I spoke with you on Tuesday, you said you were gonna redo some of the elections.
We are.
I know you're taking a very hard stance, and I see, I see you're getting very aggressive, but I'm being very upfront with you.
I'm not here to debate your particular seat, which you lost your election by one vote. I know that.
There's other challenges that have come through. As I just said, two board members were elected to the board. So they are challenging this on principle.
Which you have the process to do that.
The state constitution is part of the principle, which I've outlined, and it's part of the concern with the statute also. Mayor, I really implore you to please-
You made your point, but I made my ruling on this.
Thank you.
You have the right to go through the process. You will get a fair hearing on this. And, and for you to say that the constitution was violated, and the whole thing should be done over, and we should spend another $5,000 on behalf of people that are not protesting, I don't agree with that. I'm not gonna go along with it.
That's all right. You may not agree, but we'll talk more. Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you for having me, St. Hall, and I just wanted to say thank you for all the effort yourself and Don are putting into all the housing. And we appreciate that, but-
But?
Yeah, exactly. We're, we're supporting responsible housing, and it feels like the process is so pro-developer right now, that it feels like our communities are getting drowned out. We're not getting a fair voice in this whole effort. And an example of this is in Manoa, we have a development happening at the end of our street. Our street is a 20-foot substandard street, and yet, we're getting 158 housing units developed at the end of our street. And I would encourage us to develop in areas where there's good infrastructure, instead of creating a problem for the community, which I feel like's happened. And the permit got approved, even though there's issues, and we feel like, or what we've seen, is that the developer seems to have meetings with yourself and DPP, but we feel as a community, we're not getting an equal voice. So the question is, is how can we get to a more equitable situation? And how can we get a better voice from the community to make sure that we're not building housing that could impact the safety of the community in terms of pedestrians and bikers on the street, as well as-
So you don't like the development up in Manoa at St. Francis, right? Is that what you're talking about?
We feel that it's a security issue.
Yeah.
And we feel there's a process challenge for us, that we're not getting a fair voice in this process, and we don't feel like the rules and regulations are being adhered to fairly.
Okay. That's a loaded question. Stay there. Don, what do you want to say about that?
Yeah, so I appreciate the question, or the comment, on the, this is the St. Francis project. So it's going through the plan development, what is it called, PDU. So we have been following the processes outlined under ordinance and rules. I understand there was a public hearing at our building on this, on the sixth floor.
Yes.
So it's not that we're not listening to the community. That is part of the process. And I think there were hours of testimony provided.
Right, but a public hearing is one thing, but then to do something off the responses is, is the ideal next step, right?
Right, so-
And I feel like that didn't happen.
Well, part of that process is, based on that public hearing, our staff takes all that information, and it's part of the review. So your, whatever was said there was not ignored. It's part of that review, and then a decision was made based on all that information as required under the ordinance. I think at this time, there is a pending challenge at the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it's kind of, it's pending at this point.
We're afraid of the Zoning Board of Appeal process, because we've seen that something, our lawyers have looked into it, and have seen that 25 out of the 26 appeals that have gone in have been, have been overturned. So it almost feels like, yeah, here's your appeal process, but it's not entirely fair to the community.
So I think what you're referring to are the short-term rental violation appeals before the Zoning Board of Appeal. And yes, we have one in pretty much all of those cases, because illegal ads for illegal short-term rentals are not allowed. So that's a good thing. That does not refer to other-
We're looking forward to a fair process, Salvi.
I will tell you right now, I'll try not to be insulted by that, but I'll tell you right to your face, okay? We operate with high integrity.
Okay.
Okay? We operate with high integrity. We play by the rules. When you talk about the pro-development, I said at the outset of tonight's meeting, we came into office, there was one person with an administrative assistant in charge of housing and homelessness. Two crises that had plagued this city, this island, for decades. What we're doing in housing, the city was not even in the private activity bond business for 23 years. We instituted that, we've already awarded $670 million. The affordable housing funds had lapsed. We already took the $50 million and reinvested with small builders, developers. We developed Build 7, which incentivizes private landowners. We're first-time city subsidizing them to build. We're trying to do everything we can across the board. If I turn Kevin Loos on you, and he told you about all the remnant properties the city owned that nothing was doing with, that we're now converting and putting out, and what that represents in housing. We're also making other acquisitions. We bought Waikiki Vista, we bought Eagle Bay Center. We're doing everything across the board to create housing for people to live in.
We appreciate that. We do appreciate that.
Okay.
But we, we also see that there's situations where we're trying to jam housing in where it doesn't belong, and that's what we're afraid of.
Well, that's what the St., that's what I said. The St. Francis thing is, is controversial. I know that. But that's being dealt with-
And the other thing we're seeing is, we've gotten public record that shows that Mayor's Office and DPP is meeting with the developers, yet we didn't get a fair shake and a fair voice in this whole situation. That's what I'm afraid of.
I'm gonna give you my card, my cell number. We'll deal with this. You come to my office.
Okay.
Because I'll show you how we operate.
Okay.
And I, I-
That'd be great. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
We've got to wrap this up. I know, somebody want to ask one last question?
I just have, I just want to, this is on another subject. I am on the board of Puuunua Wailupe. We take care of Ili Kupuna in Wailupe. This is the third year that we've had to come to this event, to remind you, Mayor, that you had said you were gonna address this issue, and it's been three years, almost three years. We put in our application for the Clean Water Natural Lands from January 2022.
So what have we not done? You're counting on us to do.
No, but I want to just say, say, okay, we are making progress, okay? We're moving along. But can you please say, like, we're gonna have this resolved by the end of the year?
Okay.
I don't want to come back and have to bring this up.
Don't you like coming back? I find you very engaging.
Over and over again.
Okay, look.
But thank you for the progress.
We have, I know-
I will, I do appreciate that.
When we get off air, I'll come talk to you. I'll find out, give you, I don't know.
Can we finish it by this year?
I, I don't know the status of it right now.
We have homes that we want to bring back home, and we have unresolved issues with our Ili Kupuna.
I want to find out what the status is, and then I can answer you definitively, and I'll do that.
Okay.
All right. The beach park? What's the question on the beach park? Natalie was waiting.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I just didn't want to hold things up long.
Sorry?
Real quick. So over the years, I've found a lot of properties that have exemptions that shouldn't have exemptions, and those properties are subsidized by other classifications. With respect to Res A, I found that a lot of them now, over the last 10 years, have had 100% to even up to 180% increase in their taxes. That is for the median income range, and half, over half of those properties are rentals. So my questions are, first of all, do you support a review of 10% of the properties to determine that they are in compliance with their exemptions? Two, what is your position on Res A, the threshold and the tax rates?
I don't have a position on that to articulate right now, but go ahead. We'll come up, go ahead.
And the third one is, are you open to reducing or removing exemptions and asking the administration to determine how many properties in the charitable exemption are not actually charitable organizations?
I think we should figure out all of that, Natalie. It's a legitimate question. The answer, part of that, I would have to have our lawyers at the table to find out what we can even do legally. But since I know you, we have those questions, I promise you'll address it. We're not gonna be able to do it right now in this forum, standing here. I welcome the opportunity to bring the right people to the table and address those issues with you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, and I promise you that. You're humble, highly enough to know. I promise you that.
Thank you.
My last thing, because we're off the air, but go ahead, and then we're gonna end it, right here.
I live too near the Kokokai Beach Park.
Yes.
This morning, there was a helicopter in my window, looking for a dead body. Yesterday, there was a helicopter all afternoon, looking for another dead body. This place is very dangerous. It has a shelf that the waves roll along, that sweeps people off. People take toddlers and dogs.
So what are we supposed to do?
Okay, what my question is, I think we need to put a set of stairs cut through that shelf, and iron railings on either side, and you wouldn't have all of the cost and deaths.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, well, look, we have to wrap it up. We're already over time. Well, no, let me just wrap it up for the on-air part of it, then you can ask your question. Is that fair?
I know. I don't think it's fair.
Well, I can't control the television station. They're going off air.
No, because they can, but I'm definitely heard. That's all I have.
Yes, come up. Come up.
I'm sorry, and, and you're right. Anybody wants to leave, I understand. But last April, I came to my first mayor's meeting and met you and the whole, the whole tribe, and I appreciate that. I felt heard. I came to you and I discussed my neighborhood off Kapahulu and some concerns. I'm born and raised here, and there were some transients that would show themselves to my tenants downstairs in the broad daylight, walking to, to school with their kids. After the meeting, you, Lieutenant Lloyd, I think he was there, because I've not been able to get in touch with him for a year. And a bunch of great HPD members made me feel like it was important, and told me to call HPD next time anything ever comes about. I want to also mention that I'm a huge fan of HPD, Rosa, Souza, more than my father. Those men were there and made sure we got home safely and, and took some, instilled some values in us, us punk kids, to this day. I, in August, I was, I called HPD, like you said, too. I followed your directions, and they came right away. And I wasn't outside, because I was no makeup, in my bathing suit, defrosting a freezer. And I was impressed, because there was a guy who was wasted, and women and children were walking onto Campbell Ave in traffic to get around him, because I would be scared too. They came right away, they left him. Okay, I give up. I'm just, I want to get back to what I was doing. Five minutes later, I hear yelling and screaming, and the guy has his pants off. It's a Sunday at 5:00 PM. He's waving him around the air. A local guy was confronting him. I called 911 again, because I want to make sure they, they know that I'm gonna go down there now. I was triggered. I wasn't protected in my childhood, and I'm not gonna have it. And he tackled me like Bill Romanowski on crack, and the officer, one officer, anyway, the guy had a warrant. That would have never happened if he didn't have a warrant. 10 days later, lucky me, I was assaulted at Aloha Gas Station in Kahala on the way home from a 12-hour day, just putting oil in my car.
Okay.
I, no, it's not okay.
No, it's not okay, but what are you, what are you?
It's not okay.
I'm waiting for your question. I'm trying to be polite.
I don't, you know, yeah.
I'm trying to figure out what we did.
What, how are we being protective?
You've just said two or three times, the cops showed up. I know.
Yes, yes, they did.
They did. And I'm trying to figure out-
And it only took a few that made it difficult. The second one, I fought for my life. I literally had to fight her for a minute in Kahala. I feel safer in Wainai or Kalihii.
Okay.
It was out of sorts. This woman-
So what did, what did, what did we do wrong?
Let me, let me just express a little bit more. I'm sorry, it'll take a couple more minutes. I'm talking as fast as I can. I, nobody helped me. HPD did come. I was traumated out. I was critical for a week. I almost died. I fought for my life, and I did roller derby and I boxed, so it's not, I'm afraid Kupuna is not gonna make it out as, as well. She got out on $10 bail. That's not HPD's fault. That's the state. That's the, the leg. Then the shit show really started. That was with courts and victim services. I don't know where the gentleman was talking about, that, you know, that you, you say you have this department-
Why don't we talk off on the side part, because I really want to let all these folks go home, okay? All right, we'll do that.
I, I want people to know that this is happening.
Well, we know it's happening. That's why these guys work as hard as they do. This goes on.
I know. I, I wouldn't want to be a cop now either, because they're, these people, one-way tickets from the mainland, and they have criminal records. She almost killed an 85-year-old man.
Okay.
And she gets out on $10 bail, for free, these two guys.
All right.
Because they don't have money. So now I'm almost homeless. So now what? Because I follow the law, and I paid attention, and I did the right thing, then she has more rights than I do? That's not okay.
I don't think that's okay either.
It's not okay.
It's not.
46 arrests in two years. The cops are, they're, they know I'm right, because they, one of them told me, they did 100 arrests.
We know that.
This isn't okay.
But nobody says it's okay, but I just understand.
And I don't see anything happening down there.
Well-
I know you are working on-
These guys made almost 5,000 arrests just in Waikiki and Chinatown the last three years. The judiciary is our challenge. Prosecutor's office been doing pretty good. They turned it back out. All right. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. You can stay if you want. No, I can't, Angela, we're done. All right, just want to thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate the spirit of this meeting. Thank you.